Welcome everyone to this final meeting for the triennium of the Planning and Environment Committee. I want councillors, I'll formally declare the meeting open and move that we accept the apologies from the mayor and councillor Lord. Are there any others? Apparently not. Seconded by councillor Stones. Those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no. That's agreed. I'll further move that we confirm the agenda with the following alteration in respect to standing order 21/1, that option C be adopted in relation to moving and seconding and speaking to amendments seconded by councillor Stones. Those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no. That's agreed. And I'll remind members in the need to stand aside from decision-making in areas where they have any potential conflict. Are there any changes to the register? In that case, I'll move that we note the elected members' interest register as attached and confirm the proposed management plan for elected members' interests seconded by councillor Wilson. Those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no. That's agreed. Part A reports, this DC, item five, the DCC submission on New Zealand's new road safety strategy 2020-2030. Mr Saunders, we thought we got rid of you yesterday, Mr Saunders. Welcome back. You obviously come back for a second round of eulogies. They were so moving. Richard, do you want to talk to this?
No, happy to move to questions.
So can I just explain, this was on the agenda because it didn't meet the deadline for yesterday's meeting?
Correct.
Thank you. Questions councillors? Councillor Wiley?
On page 101 of our agenda, our reports, I see Kyle Martin completed the form. I'm sort of wondering, do you want your submission to be anonymous and your name or organisation name to be revealed from any information that Ministry of Transport publishes? And we've ticked yes.
Yeah, that's, sorry, that's something we can change. We'd take advice from the policy team who normally do the submissions. So I think that would be a DCC submission, show on as a DCC submission.
Okay, no, perfect. Thank you. I guess, I guess the part that I'm trying to get my head around is, in going through the submission and looking at it, there's quite a lot of relevance for our city on this submission and the road and infrastructure. And also what I sort of looked at and many other factors also in relation to policing. And has any discussion been had between DCC staff and the police about some of the issues in this report or in this submission?
Thank you.
So we have a relationship with the police and discuss things. We haven't discussed the submission directly with them. Obviously, the idea is looking holistically at safety and policing as a critical component of that, which is reflected in our submission. We think there could be more resourcing placed on that side of road safety. The police are involved in this process in terms of the safety strategy and I imagine would be submitted. And we'll continue to have a relationship with them on safety matters within the DCC boundaries.
Okay. One part that I sort of noted with interest because I didn't see it being applicable to Dunedin, but it was very important, I think overall, was the fact on page 99, at the end of question four, overseas drivers should be required to have a downtime before collecting rentals and driving off, just like we expect of commercial drivers. I thought that was an interesting one for us to submit on, which I fully endorse. But because we don't really get a lot of international arrivals coming into Dunedin, especially long travel. Do you think, was it relevant of us...
Is that not so?
We obviously have a number of drivers, overseas drivers travelling through Dunedin, so we feel that it's a relevant point for them to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. Welcome back, Mr Saunders. Should have saved our eulogies, shouldn't we? It's around, there's a lot in here around the built road environment and how we design roads to be safer and more forgiving. But there's nothing in here around the wider environment and managing particularly things around, it's a very particular and personal point, but managing roadside vegetation in a way that can mitigate risks around, say, ice through shading and permafrost and those sorts of things? Or is it your understanding that that is included in the ambit of how we, because it's not specifically made, but I can't even see that point referenced in any way?
I think my view on that is that that would be considered a routine maintenance activity that any council should be undertaking, or NZTA if the other road, if it's State Highway related, as opposed to part of a safety strategy. It's probably more in the operations and maintenance space where our levels of service should be ensuring that roads and roadsides remain safe.
Thank you, councillor Elder.
Just a query on page 93. It says, "We do things that will make a difference." And it says, "We base our decision up and we review everything to make sure we're doing things right." And we've got mildly support there? Is that...
I think our mild support of that was based on the lack of flexibility in some of the current rules and that we do review things and we do support that we should be reviewing things. But we also think that the system should be more flexible to allow trials of things that are working overseas that may not be contained within existing standards. It's quite a process for us to go through. The example we've had recently was the local inventor who designed the pedestrian crossing signal that we were seeking to trial. We've got that across the line, but it was quite an exercise for us to work within the national standards to get that to a point where it could be trialed. And our view is that they could take a more flexible approach to allowing those new ideas to be brought into New Zealand and trialed to see if they work.
So are we commenting on that in reference to this, this point? It's point five on page 93.
Yeah. So if you read over to page 94, our comments on that, do you have any further comments on the principle? You'll see there it says, "The rigid rule-setting framework can stifle innovation to try something", for example, speed limits. So that's the point we're trying to get across.
Thank you. I just want...
No further questions. What's, councillor Officer?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'm looking at page 100 with respect to the three most important actions. And I'm looking at prioritising road policing number 10. And from a, coming from a neighbourhood where there has been, you know, road checks, I assume, and say at the bottom of Brockville Road, maybe because people don't have licences or have old cars. And also from the experience of Afanoi, which actually adopted a system of log sheets and actually writing down police numbers because we were stopped on a disproportionately regularly basis as people of Polynesia driving cars at night. So looking at this and the same prioritising road policing, where we get stopped on a regular basis for routine checks where it doesn't happen in Wellington, I would just say, why would, why would we choose this? This is just me. As opposed to introduce a new approach to help people drive at safe speeds, number two.
So, I mean, we have in our, in our text talked about trying to identify three of these independently as very difficult because most of them do go hand in hand. I guess for, in terms of road policing, we see that as critical in terms of ensuring with the issue that we, a good example is red light running in Dunedin is something that is just not supported through enforcement currently, and it needs to be, whether that's red light cameras or physical police presence. And that's where prioritised road policing doesn't necessarily mean more police on the roads. It could be through electronic measures as well, red light and speed cameras. But we think it's a critical part of the safe system that needs to be looked at is through this review.
Councillor Gary?
So just to follow up on that question. So would that road policing include, for example, speed cameras? It was always, was always astonishing to me that when on the peninsula we inquired around the lack of speed cameras in certain areas, we learnt that they had to be gazetted. And basically, there were some huge limitations to putting in policing in terms of resources as well. So would that be part of this road policing? Would that be considered part of that? More resources for that kind of road policing?
Yeah, look, we see that as part of the police presence, whether it be a speed camera, red light camera, or physical, or any other technology that may come about. So that's big picture. But that's where it goes hand in hand with the processes that enable that sort of technology to be introduced. You know, they don't, they don't always stand independently, but we were asked to identify three.
Sure. And so would you write further comment on that? Or do you feel it's, there's enough comment in there?
We're fairly comfortable that we've covered the basis and through workshops with them as well.
Councillor Hawkins, you would move? I second. Councillor Gary, this is moving the approval of the draft submission before you. Any discussion? Do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, just briefly, thank you. And I mean, it's hard to argue with anything that is being put forward in the discussion document, that there is no acceptable level of death or serious injury on the roads. And I applaud staff for calling it out for not being ambitious enough in setting its interim targets. Effectively, you know, the principles are that nobody should be killed or seriously injured on our roads, that people make mistakes, and that deaths and injuries, and I think this is the most pertinent point in some ways, deaths and injuries aren't even entirely avoidable if everybody follows all of the road rules. And I think it's 170 was the number of people that would still have died if everybody had done everything that they had swatted for in their road code test once upon a time. And so, you know, we need to design our, our infrastructure accordingly. This isn't the sole answer. It's tied into other work that the Transport Authority are doing, or whatever they call today. And through the government's policy statement and work that we're doing through our integrated transport strategy around prioritising or encouraging freight by rail, safer cycling and walking and a greater uptake of public transport. But this is certainly a key part of, of the push towards a safer road system, investing in safer infrastructure, a safer driving, a safer vehicle fleet, and yes, even controversially safer speed limits on our roads, which has attracted a lot of disproportionate amount of attention as this, as this document has been discussed. It is a strategy. I'm looking forward to seeing the how, which will follow on from this. But this is certainly the right direction for our transport network to be heading in. And I thank staff for pushing it further along than it has been drafted. Thanks.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Gary?
I welcome this. And I particularly like the scope of it. As somebody that's been involved with a project that was implementing safety improvements for a community and for the wider city on the peninsula, the Peninsula Connection project, I've seen firsthand the difference that building different infrastructure can, the effect that that can have on the safety for everybody that uses the road, be it driving pedestrians or cyclists in that case. I have noted that in recent years, it's now, we're always looking whenever there's an accident, is it on the new section or is it on the section yet to be improved? And by and large, unless there's something like a medical event, by and large, the accidents are occurring on the parts that are not improved. I was always interested in the precursor to this, the Safer Journeys program, which had the main theme of that if you made a mistake on the road, it should not cost you your life or serious injury. But I don't know that the community is particularly aware of the wider themes going through these kinds of programs. But certainly where I live, we have seen the benefits of it for improved safety for our community, for all of our community, no matter what kind of mode of transport they use. And so I think it's great that we're submitting. I like what we've put in there. I was a little puzzled about that one, that mildly support now I understand it. And certainly around the resources that police have in a local rural area is relevant to this. And with the number of growing visitors that we have in our city, and again, in that area, I've just been talking about, all of these things are relevant.
Thank you. Further speakers? I'll put it. Those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no. That's agreed. That takes us to item six, proposed consultation on the Dunedin City Speed Limit Bylaw Amendment number 10. Questions? Or do you want to make any comment, Mr Saunders, before we go to questions?
Just briefly. So obviously, this, this speed limit bylaw amendment is much smaller than most of ours, which captures a number and is purely a response to NZTA's willingness to review the speed limit on State Highway 88 through Port Chalmers. So we have limited this amendment only to those roads feeding into the area they're looking at reducing the speed on. So hence, hence the narrowness of the changes. There will be a further amendment coming capturing other sites around the city that have been tagged for speed reductions in the future.
Thank you. Councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you, Mr Saunders. And I think this is an entirely sensible response for us as the road controlling authority to take. My concern and therefore my question is around how much sense it makes for us to go out with a proposal without knowing in advance what the outcome of NZTA's proposal process might be. So for example, should the community and councils desire for George Street to be 30Ks be posted? And we have consulted on a 40K speed limit in neighbouring streets, or the status quo remains and we've gone out. And it just seems to me like procedurally waiting to see what the outcome of the NZTA process would be first makes more sense. The question is, would staff have any concern about that as far as process is concerned?
No, we don't. I acknowledge that that, those outcomes are possible. From a staff perspective, we're, we're confident that there will be an outcome from the NZTA process that results in a reduced speed. Should it be further reduced than what they're initially proposing? Again, I think the intent of our consultation is to lower the speeds in those small sections of road to make them consistent with the 88 speed. And we, we have some discretion or we could use some discretion in there to make sure that our outcome matches theirs. So I think we can manage that process.
Can you just elaborate on that? Because I, what I'm understanding from what councillor Hawkins asked was, is there, is there a problem waiting till you have the outcome of the TA process rather than engaging on this simultaneously?
It means that any changes we make would come months after the changes NZTA are looking to make, which will be this calendar year. If we waited for those and then went through a, we would have to go through a standard, a special consent procedure and potentially a hearing and then a further council report. And therefore, our changes would be towards the end of summer, where the intent is to try and get all of this through as early as we can prior to the busiest season in Port Chalmers.
And you don't see any difficulty with ensuring that whatever comes out of our process aligns sensibly with whatever comes out of the TA initiative?
No. I'm confident it will line up.
Councillor Wilson?
Just understanding the limits you propose. And I was reading the Port Otago annual report the other day for heaven knows why. And it talks about that all the traffic heading to the port are required to do 30. And I'm just checking, this is suggesting 40. If the big trucks are doing 30, wouldn't it, and it's mandated apparently and actually checked by the transport companies going into the port, wouldn't we be better to be consistent to something that's already happening and, and tested at the lowest point? We can then go up during discussions, but going down becomes more problematic in the range?
So we, we are following NZTA's lead on this process. They've identified through there, which is in table one, the safe and appropriate speeds, that State Highway 88 is built and operates as suitable to operate at a 40 km an hour. Therefore, that's the appropriate speed for us to consult on for the...
Okay. Can I ask a procedural question and follow up? That's okay. Thank you, Mr Chair. If we advertise at 30, I presume we can go during the deliberations and whoever's on that panel can go to 40 as an interim step. But if you advertise at 40, is it still within the purview of those hearing it to go to 30? Because it isn't in the range.
If, if a number of our submissions indicated, submitters indicated that's what they wanted and it was the view, then yes, they could. So we've, we've had that at previous speed hearings where we've, we've shifted the areas covered, or we've looked at the, we've added additional roads into immense speed amendments. So that would be, if that was the view of the council, when we brought this back, that change could be made.
So that's, that would be within scope. Thank you.
Councillor O'Malley?
This came up again at the Regional Transport Committee meeting. And there was a comment that if you lower any street too low to 30K, people will go around and they'll do a rat race around. But if you look at the geography of Port Chalmers, do you think it's likely that they would shoot up Buckland Street and then shooting around the hill in order to go 50 in that direction instead of 30 down the front?
No, it'd be unlikely. I think the, the traffic pattern through there would remain as is.
That's pretty much what you would expect to happen, right?
Councillor Gary?
Thank you.
So I don't believe anyone's asked this, but what's the view of the West Harbour Community Board? Because they were certainly advocating for 30 the last time that I recall hearing their view.
Councillor Hawkins' memory of that meeting might be better. So I did attend the meeting with NZTA where they, they discussed this change. And the board's view was still that 30 was their preference. However, they were, they appreciated that NZTA had got to a point where they were proposing a reduction of any sort on the road and were in support of them getting through that process. And I would expect there would be a submission made by the community board.
Councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you. The board hasn't discussed this proposal, which is Feeding Street, so they don't have a view on that. But certainly, the board and council's view for George Street, they're still for it to be 30K. Is there a way, I mean, do you know what the timeline is for TA's public-facing consultation process?
Yes, they are looking to start consultation next week.
Right. So I'm just, and do you know for how long? I guess really what I'm, where I'm trying to get to is, is it, can they be not quite in parallel but staggered somehow so that at least the hearings of this are held subsequent to a decision being made?
If it's not a, if the council view that it's not absolutely critical for the side streets to have speed changes made immediately at the time the State Highway 88 changes are made, then there would be no issue letting this paper sit here until NZTA had completed their process, which they are still aiming to do this calendar year, late October, early November, so they can get those changes in as they'd committed to. And then for us to have a look at the council meeting diaries later in the year and line up our process as quickly as we can to go through a process that would then align with NZTA's final decision.
Well, I'm going to move the recommendations as they stand in a moment. Councillor, if you want to move an amendment to let this lie on the table to change the timing of the process, that will be, you're free to do that. No, no other questions. I'll move the recommendations as they're on the order paper approving the statement of proposal to be publicly notified for consultation in that period, 12 August to 13 September, noting that we'll appoint a hearing, someone will appoint a hearings committee in due course, should that be needed, and that noting that the NZTA-led consultation of the proposed speed changes to State Highway 88 will be occurring at the same time. Do I have a second? A councillor Wilson? Discussion? There appears to be none, so I'll put it. Those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no. That's agreed. That takes us to item seven, the Planning and Environment Non-Financial Activity Report for the quarter ended 30 June. Oh, and just before you leave, Mr Saunders, I'm sorry, can I add the thanks of this committee to those that were poured upon you quite justifiably and well-earned yesterday for all your efforts on behalf of this authority and this community. Good luck. Look forward to working with you with a different hat on. All right. Mr Pickford, do you have, or does either of you have any questions to, any comments to make about the non-financial report? Questions councillors? Councillor Hawkins has moved. Councillor Wilson has seconded. Do you wish to speak to it, councillor Hawkins? Any discussion? Obviously, a consummately comprehensive piece of reporting. Thank you very much for all your work. Those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no. That's agreed. That takes us to item eight, the first of the Freedom Camping Reports. What is your preference to deal with these two separately or to, that's probably more, more discreet? So do you wish to make any comments about the, the matters raised in item eight? Questions about the first? Councillor Wiley?
Thank you. I've got a series of questions. First one is paragraph 15, "The Ministry of Business Innovation and Employment contributed $79,000 towards short-term practical solutions to freedom camping issues in Dunedin." Can you just re-clarify for me, was this money given for to set up or relieve some of the freedom camping pressures? And did it have to go to an area like this or a non-self-contained or a self-contained site or anything? Were there any restrictions on the funding?
There were some restrictions on the funding. Thank you. There were some restrictions on the funding. We were asked for ideas or I guess we were asked for areas in which we required help regarding freedom camping. We were invited to apply for some infrastructure funding to help with things like smart bins. We made an application for smart bins. But no, I don't believe that there was any, any specific requirements to only apply for, sorry, what was the, the second part of that?
So there were no real restrictions? It had to go to, it be established for a self-contained or a non-self-contained site or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay. And I take it we're going for another application for funding?
Correct.
And there's no restrictions on parameters on how we use those funds in relation to freedom camping?
There have been some restrictions this time around with regard to infrastructure. I believe that they would prefer applications for infrastructure to go through the Tourism Infrastructure Fund.
Now, the site at Thomas Burns, is that for self-contained vehicles only or non-self-contained or both?
So the trial over the previous freedom camping season, that was an unrestricted freedom camping site, so that's for any type of vehicle. That was up until the end of April. From that point, it reverts to being a regular car park in which a certified self-contained vehicle can stay for up to two consecutive nights.
Okay, so I guess that's where I was leading in relation to our council website. That says, "Freedom campers and non-self-contained vehicles can only camper two designated sites, Warrington Domain and Ocean View Recreational Reserve."
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. When I look at some of the data and paragraph nine, it's spent $49.62 per person per night. Do we know how that was broken down? Was it like, did they enjoy and spend money seeing attractions, going to Llanarkas or places like that?
Yes, we do have some indication. The expenditure data was broken down into, I believe it was five categories, food, food, fuel, accommodation, activities and attractions, other shopping. The figure there, it's probably worth saying that that figure is a conservative figure. Some of the feedback we received with that survey was that a fair proportion of those respondents were quite early in their stay and hadn't perhaps had an opportunity to spend within the city. So for example, if you're a freedom camper at the Warrington Domain and you have moved... So for example, if you're a freedom camper at the Warrington Domain and you have moved to that spot from Omuru and you've been surveyed that afternoon, you probably haven't had a very good opportunity to spend very much.
Is it possible for you to share that breakdown with us?
Yep.
At some point? Okay. When I look at further down, we're travelling in a certified self-contained vehicle. Now, that's certified as per the certificate on the windscreen, not just the blue sticker on the back?
Correct.
Okay. Then I go to paragraph 11, where we then, I guess the same question applies, they were all, 71% of the infringement notes were issued against vehicles that didn't have the certification.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor O'Malley.
My question's actually around that daily spend number. Did you manage to break that down into what site they were at?
Slightly more than half of the respondents were surveyed at the Warrington Domain. So in terms of where that expenditure occurred in the city, no, we don't have that information.
Not so much where it occurred, but more if they were spending the night at one facility, were they more or less likely to have spent money? In other words, once you get to Warrington, there's nowhere to spend money, so once you're there, there's no opportunity to get any more. But if you're in town, there is opportunity. So was there, did you look at the differences of where they were camped and whether it had an effect on the 24-hour spend?
I think that would be possible from a subsequent survey with a larger sample size. Once you start to look at your campers who are at a specific site, have spent time in the city, etc., your sample size starts to diminish quite significantly, if that makes sense.
I just would say, if you surveyed them, let's say, in the morning, and if they'd been in town, they would have had a night spend and their day spend, that's what I'm thinking about. In other words, if there's anything grossly different between them out, it would probably pop up even if it was not that granular. Would that be likely, do you think?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Councillor Gary.
Some time ago, there was talk of the possibility of collecting fines at the border and collecting fines through the rental companies. I note that if the figure, if we take the figure of the expenditure on enforcement and we compare it with the value of the infringement notices, it's pretty much the same, but some of that has been collected, not all. Is there any progress on an increased collection of the infringement fines?
Not that I'm aware of. That's something that would have to happen at a national level.
Yeah, yeah. So we have no knowledge of any progress in that in a national sense?
No. This latest season, one thing, one sort of new initiative that we were involved with was, actually, it was, I guess, put forward by one of the rental companies in which they offered to pay for any of their camping infringements. So they would pay us directly, then they would follow up and try and retrieve that money from the, from the campers. It, to be fair, was not a company that tended to rent vehicles that were likely to receive an infringement notice.
Councillor Elder.
I note that we're moving towards getting a tourism tax coming, for people coming into the country, and I was wondering whether the Tourism Infrastructure Fund has indicated any willingness to actually pay a lot more into the funding for issues created by freedom campers?
There's currently the Responsible Camping Fund, which is what we've applied to for some of the initiatives in next season. I'm not sure whether a tourist tax would contribute to that fund or not.
Okay.
I could perhaps comment on that. I don't think it's been defined yet, councillor, as to how they're going to intend to do that, but they are in discussions currently around the tax and how they will be apportioning that out into the community.
Oh, thank you, because that will add up to a considerable amount. And as cost to the council, we've got, we've received fines of $65,000, which is 61% of it, and hopefully get some more. And we also received MB money of $79,000. That adds up to $144,000. So is that helping with allaying the cost to Dunedin of putting that freedom camping infrastructure to the right?
Well, it's certainly helping. Yep. We, I think last season, we recovered about 70% of the infringement notices that were issued. We would hope to receive about the same amount this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Wiley.
Thank you. Can you just walk me through with the process? So someone gets a fine, a freedom camping fine, the sticker goes on their windscreen and then it's up to them whether they choose to come and pay it or not? And do they have to pay it in person?
They can pay for the fine online, they can pay it in person at the, at the DCC front counter. The process is currently taken care of by regulatory services. Basically, the way I believe it works is in line with other infringements you might receive for a parking infringement or something of that nature. So you receive your infringement notice on your vehicle, you're then given 28 days, I believe, before you receive a reminder notice, a further 28 days before you receive a follow-up reminder notice, and then I believe it's transferred to the Ministry of Justice and dealt with in the courts.
Okay, so it's not like a, you get a speed camera notification in a rental car where it comes back on the vehicle?
So in the event that you're in a rental camper van, the reminder notice would be sent to the rental company. The rental company in the, in most cases will then send us a statutory declaration saying that they were not in possession of the vehicle at the time, and they generally pass us on the address details that were given to them by the person who hired that vehicle at the time that the hire was made.
Okay. I'm still, well, actually, how does Queenstown or Wanock or how do some of these other areas around nearby us deal with this?
In terms of infringement notices? I believe they deal with them in a same, in a similar way. It's my understanding that we have a fairly good rate of collection on those notices compared to the rest of the country. Some councils have experimented with clamping in the past with varying degrees of success or other, but I think it is a problem that is encountered by, by all local authorities who are issuing infringements.
So if, and again, I'm looking at what our next item is, if we increase the number of rangers, could a ranger visit the, return to the areas, you know, in the morning at eight o'clock or something like that and try and collect the fee at that time?
I'm, I would presume, and I'm not totally clear on this, but I would imagine that there's a statutory requirement around infringement notices where you need to provide a period for payment. If you're suggesting, could they go and ask for payment at that time? That might be, that might be possible. As I said, I'm not sure what the statutory requirements are there.
I, I, yes. Yeah, okay, that's where I, where I was actually leading. Okay, thank you.
Can I just follow up on one element of that? What's the break, have you got any feel for the breakdown in terms of infringement volume between people who are hiring from a rental company and others who are using a privately-owned vehicle?
We don't have that at the moment. It's something we could look to gather in the future, so we're...
The reason I ask, I think that might be helpful. The reason I ask is because I'm surprised that the rental companies don't, as part of their agreement, have the credit card number and just process the fine, having received exactly the sharp end of that process after speed camera fines in Europe, when my wife was driving, of course. Where they had the card details and it was debited in the conversation and you were informed about it. I would hope that, it obviously may not have a great effect because most of the vehicles are probably not the larger, more formal rental vehicle, but I would be surprised if they're not covering their own tracks by having such as part of their agreement. So could you check that out, please?
Sure. Just on that note, it's my understanding that the rental companies aren't obliged, so there wouldn't be, there'd be no obligation for them to pay, for them to charge their, the hire, the fine that they've received.
Germans are doubtless more Catholic about such matters. All right, thank you. Councillor Gary.
Just following on from that, and I'm trying to think of the word, you'll help me with this, I'm sure, Mr Pickford. Isn't it the case that if the community rangers were then have to, having to collect fines, they would have to be authorised in a particular way? I'm trying to think of the word.
Warranted.
Warranted, that's the word, thank you. Warranted to do so, and that would be possible. Wouldn't it change the whole nature of their work, which is like an educational, managing people to go to the right place kind of approach?
Yeah, so the role the community rangers have had in the previous season has definitely been an education, educational role. That's been the number one priority. I believe they would need to be warranted in that situation, and it's, it's not something that we've, we've anticipated that they'd do at this stage.
But would it not then put them in an adversarial role as opposed to an educative role?
No, that's quite possible.
Councillor Hall.
Following on from what Councillor Beeson Pope said before in Europe, would it not be possible to talk to the Ministry of Business Innovations and try and get them to talk to all of the rental, all of them across the board? This comes in as part of their rental because some incidents, I know from rental vehicles, people have to pay them if they're notified before the delivery back of the vehicle, because back on the hire. So would it not be worth talking to Business Innovations and see if they would be prepared to talk to all of the rental companies and put something in their agreement?
Yeah, I'd say that this is...
Just before you answer that, can I ask, add something to your question for you to answer, please. Is it not possible to have a connection to data entry to passport departures?
I think these conversations have been had. I haven't heard any progress at this stage.
Thank you. Councillor O'Malley.
Just a quick question around the enforcement costs. About $109,000. Would they go up or go down, do you think, if we had a less permissive attitude towards freedom camping? If we absolutely outlawed it, do you think they'd go up or go down? I don't have to answer that, I'll just talk about it in my...
I mean, I'm speculating. I think that the, I think we'd have a lot more complaints and we tend to respond to those, to those complaints on an individual basis as best we can. So I'd imagine that the, that the bill would go up.
All right, that appears to be the end of questions on that part. I'll move the recommendation that we note that 1819 season report, seconded by Councillor Elder. Any discussion? Those in favour? Councillor Gary.
It's interesting listening to this conversation because we've traversed a number of these things for a number of years, and I'm aware that at a national level, the idea of collecting fines at the border and collecting fines from rental car agencies has been well-traversed in the past. I recall when I was on community boards executive committee, there was discussion between the committee and, and members of parliament, government ministers, government officials around this very matter, and we had various addresses to the committee because it was a commonality between community boards throughout the country. So thank you for the work you've done on this, and I really welcome the community rangers as part of this work because one aspect that was missing some years ago when we were, before we put the bylaw in place, before council of the time put the bylaw in place, was an educative role. We tried the enforcement plus education, didn't work. We had the warranted people or we looked towards that, and I really appreciate the work that has gone on to have the community rangers manage the freedom camping and assist in this because it's not about banning, we can't do that entirely. And I look to what has happened on the peninsula since the bylaws been in place, there is on the whole good management. That very robust bylaw that council put in place has worked really well, and it wasn't about outlawing freedom camping, it was about managing it in the appropriate places. So thank you for your work.
Councillor O'Malley.
The reason I ask that question about enforcement is that I think that if we were accommodating or unaccommodating, that number would be an expense borne on us anyway. So when commenting on the cost of freedom camping, I'd like a new headline that says council spends $70,000 for $3.4 million economic return. My idea is that really if we are to, we're heading in the right direction and we're going to touch on this in the next item, it's about the appropriate level of accommodation. We do have to listen to the other people, like the camping grounds, but I don't think these people go into the camping grounds. And if we pick the right sites, which is really the next item, we can have an even bigger economic return back to us. So if we do this right, everybody's a winner. Thank you.
Councillor Wiley.
Thank you. You know what, we have made a lot of progress in this area, but I'm still extremely frustrated, especially after hearing the gentleman from Leaf Valley Campground. We are consistently giving the city away in this area. We have consistently done that for years and it's driving me nuts. The fact that these people have travelled, in some cases from the other side of the world to get here, and we can't charge them $10 or $15 a night to stay in our car parks to give them the facilities that our ratepayers are spending, are paying for, I just find that ludicrous. Our ratepayers are generally paying for this. Yes, we're getting some funding from MB, but it's our ratepayers who put the money up to run the city in a lot of ways. And when our ratepayers drive past Thomas Burns Drive and they see these freedom campers coming here and staying for free, I tell you what, they get frustrated about it and I hear it time and time again. And I think when I've spent time talking to these freedom campers, a lot of them go, yeah, if it was $10, $15, not a problem. They are turning around, they are going to places like McDonald's in a lot of cases. They're going to the supermarket, yes, they're filling up their vehicles. Great, they're enjoying Dunedin, but they're not spending a lot of money in a lot of cases. We have a different generation of freedom campers. We have the ones that are renting the branded vehicles and are travelling around the country and spending real money. And you see them at the tourism facilities. They are actually having a great time exploring New Zealand. Then you see a lot of these Toyota Hi-Ace vans or station wagons or whatever with beds in the back that even aren't in full terms self-contained, getting away with it. And we're giving it into them. They're getting it for free. You talk to the residents around St Clair Esplanade and you listen to the frustration they have had, and we've seen it in the media, about the campus parking there time and time again. I've spent a lot of time talking to staff about this, saying, how can we do something with this and move these vans away? They've got the certification, unfortunately, but when you go and look at the vehicle, they actually don't certify. In some cases, the vehicles are sold with the certification or they go and get licensed with the certification. Once they've got that, they then remove what they need to remove, but the vehicle still is certified. And I've talked to people policing this and they agree. But let's really get clear, our residents do not like seeing freedom camping at Kensington Oval. They do not like seeing freedom camping at the Esplanade. And I still, and I will continue to move on this view time and time again, these freedom campers would not mind spending $10 or $15 to stay at somewhere like Thomas Burns. Let's stop giving the city away and let's charge them a normal fee.
Thank you, councillor. Largely out of order, but I'll assume that you're not going to need to repeat yourself when we go to item nine in terms of the continuation of the current council policy. Any further speakers? All right, I'll move, I'll put it then, those in favour, please say aye. Against, no. That's agreed unanimously. And item nine, just before we go to that and any comments you want to make, I think it's appropriate to congratulate the staff on the initiative that has taken the pressure off the other sites, like it or not. Um, like it or not, um, freedom camping in some form or other is a reality in our community and most communities around the world, actually, certainly in Western Europe. Um, he said, as his daughter is freedom camping in Norway, uh, and paying large amounts when she stays in a camping ground and nothing at all when she stays in very populous, quite spectacular, free, public facilities. Um, so I think, um, we could learn the lessons from what some of those other communities are doing. And I think the initiative in respect of Thomas Burns has shown, um, a good pathway forward. Clearly it will need to be balanced and moderated as time goes on, uh, but I don't think the demand is going to change. Can I ask, do you want to make any statement before we go to questions?
No, no.
Can I start the questions on nine then, just about sites? Um, the informal site at the Oval at the Victoria Tavern. Is there any consideration for putting some rubbish and or toilet facilities on that site? Or is that going to stay as a bit of an overflow or for those who like parking next to the pub?
Uh, that's the Kensington Tavern?
Kensington, sorry.
Uh, yes, that has been considered and that's something we're looking into.
You're looking into it?
Yeah.
Have you had any discussions with the people at the Kensington Tavern about that?
Yes.
Good, thank you. councillor Gary.
Just a point of clarification, uh, because I recall the willingness of freedom campers to pay a nominal fee, as per my colleague's statement some time ago, before the bylaw was put in place, and I was told by council staff that that was not able to be done, that was not possible. Is that still the case?
I'd struggle to answer that. I think it, I would, I would imagine it would be very difficult to do that.
Okay, so that's still the case as far as you know. Thank you.
Further questions? councillor O'Malley.
Um, the Waikato Coast Community Board obviously is host to the Warrington Domain, um, site. And, um, they had advocated for this urban site for a number of years. Um, and I think are very pleased with the fact that it's come now. Um, as you can see how I'm going to vote. Um, the, um, the other thing they have been saying is that there are more sites in the urban area that could take more cars. And we are seeing the load drop on these peripheral sites. Um, the argument has been that many of the freedom campers when they get here have been at isolated rural sites up till this point and are quite enjoying the capacity to be in the city. So, is there a planning afoot to think about increasing the size of the urban sites and at the same time, especially in Warrington, decreasing the number of sites out there, which is a fairly big call from that community to say, if you could limit the number of vehicles that hit that domain, it would be quite nice for them.
Um, it's, I'd say that would be something we're considering. I, um, wouldn't say that it, that it's being planned at the moment. Um, but we're keeping an eye on the, the numbers that are, that are staying at our current sites, certainly. And, um, we're aware of, of how much they've increased, how, how much use, usage has increased over the last year. And so it's certainly something that, um, if we were to see that increase again, um, that would be a consideration.
Thank you. councillor LaFesso.
Thank you, Mrs Chair. Thank you. Um, I'm just, I've got two questions. One is about the community rangers. So, um, I don't know if it's for Mr Pickford or Sandy, um, Ms Graham. Um, the, so the, those positions are permanent or seasonal?
Seasonal.
Okay. Um, uh, is it, would there, is there any way to sort of make them like permanent or? I'm just, I'm just, just thinking in terms of increasing employment numbers.
I, I wouldn't have thought that we have an, an ongoing need, we have, there's a clear season when, when there, there's a real value in having them. That'd be a fair assumption.
Yeah.
And the, the second question is just, um, one of clarification of paragraph seven, where it says camper numbers at the Warrington and Ocean View sites decreased by thirty six percent and forty one percent respectively, uh, despite a twenty five percent increase in unrestricted. So, so can you just give a background to the increase?
Yeah, so, um, if you add up all the users across those three, across unrestricted sites, then we've seen a twenty five percent increase in total user numbers this latest season compared to the season before that. However, the numbers, uh, at those two distinct sites decreased.
Councillor Wiley.
Um, thank you. Um, just a follow-up question to councillor Gary's question. Um, with collecting, as I look at collecting fees for overnight stay, a car park, there is a car parking, um, dispenser there, a pain display, I take it. And so rejigging that machine to, for an overnight stay and for a fee is, would be normal in most car parking machines, am I? Probably not your boundary, but.
Oh, um, yes, you, technically, yes, you could program the machine if you wanted to introduce charges another time, but, um, that's, that's not currently how the, the fees, fees are, sorry, currently structured.
Okay, no, that's fine. Um, and the other question I've got is regards to, um, paragraph twelve and the community rangers. I remember James Henry, uh, when he was still alive, uh, did some great work with students in collecting data around the tourism industry. Has council made any approach or, uh, engaged with the tourism department at the university to work through some of these issues and help, and help and assist over the summer period? Or even bring students on as interns to do that?
Uh, we, I believe we have engaged with them in the past. Um, it wasn't something that we, that we did in the, um, in the recent season. Um, I believe they helped conduct a survey in two thousand and fourteen, um, their marketing department. Um, it's something that we could consider in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Hall.
So, um, should we re, move recommendation one? Um, it is conditional on being subject to funding from MB, so it's not going to cost the ratepayers any more to have to, for, in a sense that the funding's coming from MB, is that right?
Yeah, that's right. So we, um, we don't anticipate there'd be any, um, cost above what we've asked MB for.
Yeah. And do you foresee that MB might use some of the, um, tax that we are taxing people for coming into Dunedin, New Zealand for tourism infrastructure that might increase?
I could only speculate, but sure.
Councillor Stones.
One of the things that I think many of us have been concerned about is the con, the containment of vehicles and the fact that vehicles are, are carrying stickers that say they are self-contained, but actually they're not. I was just wondering whether this is an area that we could gather a little bit more data on, if we, if we do have additional ranges. Not, not to upset the people who have the vehicle, but to get a better, better dataset for using towards encouraging the government to change the way in which these vehicles are actually, um, certified, so that, so that we can get rid of or, or make it much more difficult for someone to put a porta potty in a, in a, uh, van, get certified and then take it out or seal it and say, we'll charge you if you use it.
Yeah, there are, I mean, it, possibly an important point of clarification is that the, um, the enforcement team are not looking at stickers, they're looking at certificates which appear on the windshield of a vehicle. That indicates that it's been certified by an issuing authority to be, um, at a self-containment level for a given number of persons for a, a period of time. Um, some people would say that the NZD standard behind that, um, is not adequate enough. Um, and that you could turn a people mover into a, a camper van. Um, NZD, the NZD self-containment standard is the best and only measure we currently have. Um, we could gather data around the style of vehicle that we're seeing and, um, perhaps, um, we could look into whether we're seeing more infringements from certain styles of vehicles. That's something we could do.
Thank you. councillor Stedman.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Thank you, gentlemen. I just, following up on councillor Gary's and Wiley's, um, thing about the charging. Um, council don't tend to like to compete against other businesses and I, I wonder if, um, would this not be competing against a business that supplies washing, kitchen facilities, lots of toilets, shower, dry, et cetera, and thus supplying a minimal service of a toilet and therefore competing against them. Like in my business, I charge a higher fee and there's other real estate companies that charge down here for a lower service. So essentially that's what you'd be doing. Would that be correct?
Uh, yes, I'd say that.
And going against really the ratepayer boost as the council competing against each other.
Yes, I think, I think the, uh, the freedom camp sites we do offer are very basic and, um, I think that there is an incentive, there still exists an incentive to stay at a, a, an actual campground where you have things like showers and laundry facilities. Um, yeah, I'd say that's correct.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. As much as I hate to interrupt, this is a real estate advertisement. Um, my question's around management of the South Coast. Um, because I noticed, I didn't know whether, whether we'd asked this during the previous paper or this one, but there was a considerable number of the infringements are coming from the South Coast, but there's nothing additional proposed in terms of managing that for the coming season, or is, uh, or is it intended that the increased ranger presence will deal with that?
Um, so, uh, we, we'd hope that there, the, an increased ranger, uh, presence would have an effect on that. One other thing that we implemented, um, quite late in the season was a collaborative, um, initiative with CamperMate in which we installed a parking sensor over the Ocean View Reserve. What that did was updated the, um, CamperMate app with the availability of camping spaces. And, um, it seemed to work very well. And what we were noticing at that site was that a large proportion of infringements were being issued for people who had clearly arrived at the site when it was full, quite late at night, and had been, infringed for that reason. So, um, I think we've seen an improvement at that site since that, that, um, that sensor's gone in and, um, and hopefully we continue to see improvements there.
Because it's a long way to go to find out that it's full, effectively, then turn around and come back.
Effectively, yeah. We, we do also find that, uh, that for one reason or another, campers arriving at that site tend to arrive quite late at night. So I think they're already ready to call it a day at that time.
Councillor Elder.
Um, you extended, did you not, um, the, um, more spots and, and around the Brighton Rugby Club, is that right?
So the, the Brighton Domain is considered to, um, function, the, the parking areas there are considered to function as parking spaces on a reserve. So that's not a, that's not a council freedom camping site, that's a car park. So anyone parking there needs to be certified self-contained. So we tidied up the parking areas, we made them, um, we, I guess you could say we, um, demarcated them better to show people where they should be parking.
You think that's taken a little bit of pressure off the other places as well?
Um, I think, I think the, the main effect that's had has been to improve the way people are using that site. Um, we've sort of, we did allocate an area as being the site, the, the, the section of that, um, site that you overnight camp in if you're certified self-contained. Um, we've had some positive feedback from the community on that because you don't have a wide dispersal of freedom campers, um, right around that area. They're all sort of allocated in one space, yeah.
Councillor Wiley.
Um, thank you. Before I ask my question, I just want to indicate that I like the motions taken separately. Thank you.
Certainly, I will therefore move, um, the two.
Uh, before I ask my question, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Um, can I, um, I see in paragraph sixteen, um, increased by twenty five percent over the current season. So nationally, we're seeing a stronger growth in this area and it's.
Yes, I mean, I, I can only really comment on the data that we've gathered. That's the data, um, that we gather and that's what indicates, um, whether there's been a twenty five percent increase in, um, freedom campers nationally. I, I couldn't comment on that.
But from past experience, over the last three, four years, it's a data.
Yeah, I mean, the, the best, the, we've made quite an effort to improve our data collection this, this latest season. And, um, we were able to compare that with, um, some good data we collected in the, in the last season. I couldn't say with much confidence what the percentages increases were in years previous, but, um, that's what the, the data indicated for this, this latest, latest season. Yeah.
No further questions. I'll move the two recommendations on the order paper that we approve the expansion of the community ranger numbers from two to four for the incoming season, subject to funding approval from MB. Everyone wants to second this. Um, and also that we approve the continuation of the Thomas Burns trial site for the six-month freedom camping season nineteen twenties. Councillor LaFesso was the hand I chose. She wins the lottery. Uh, we'll take them. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Gary.
Over the years, I've lived and breathed freedom camping and I will remember coming back from a holiday where I'd been out of cellphone coverage to find chaos in McCandry Bay, um, because of the popularity of the site. Um, I find it difficult to hear colleagues making pariahs out of the, particularly the young visitors that come, uh, to our city in this way. Um, and I, I find it difficult to hear phrases like getting away with it. It has been my experience that, um, freedom campers are more than willing to pay. In fact, we tried very hard to introduce a donation system, a donation box, uh, at McCandry Bay in the middle of that ferrore and were told that it was not possible for us to do that. Um, and, and one of those considerations was about competing with camping grounds. But also I know that many of these people are not going to go to camping grounds as a rule. It's not always about money. Um, although budget does come into it for sure. Um, I, I think we'd all agree this is a complex matter. Uh, and I appreciated hearing from the Leith Valley Holiday Park gentleman who, um, put a point of view that was entirely reasonable and I don't think any of us want to be competing with campgrounds. They offer a totally different experience and full facilities. And I took his point about the extent of the season. Um, I would just remind ourselves the approach that the Waukati Community Board and the Saddle Hill Community Board have taken in recent, in recent times, where they have, um, seen these visitors as people who have come to share their special place and seeing that as a positive thing rather than making pariahs from them, of them. And I, um, I remember how offended I was when we had someone come to public forum in the middle of one of our few, of previous debates on freedom camping and calling freedom campers noxious pests at the time my daughter was a freedom camper in Scotland. Um, and I think labelling everyone who freedom camps as irresponsible by the way we describe them is, is really, uh, not okay at all. Because many of these young people and many of the people not so young who choose this particular method of, of, um, staying in our, in our city and who dip in and out, as we heard from the Holiday Park owner, dip in and out of campgrounds on the way for a hot shower or wash the clothes. Um, many of these people come back to our city and over the years I've heard many, uh, stories, anecdotal stories of people who've come, uh, to Dunedin using this method of transport and visiting in this way to check out our city for coming to live here. Um, and so we need to be careful how we describe them. Um, and I believe in most cases they are responsible, engaged visitors. Yes, they're on a limited budget. I always find it terribly interesting to hear, I haven't heard it in this debate, but often what they eat, uh, is mentioned. They eat noodles, people will say in great shock. I always find that terribly amusing. Um, and yes, they're on limited budgets, but they do spend their money in various ways. And it'd be very interesting to hear some research about the people at the Thomas Burns site and how they managed to access town so much more easily and spend their money there. Um, and I congratulate staff. My goodness, we've made huge progress um, since we put in the bylaw and all the work that's been done over the years. Um, and I know it's very complex, but I congratulate you for the way the city is managing, uh, this particular matter. And the community rangers are pivotal to this because they're a positive educational presence. And I believe, uh, that having another two in there will help with this management of this particular group of visitors.
Councillor O'Malley.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say my summer was a lot nicer this summer because, um, not every community board meeting on the Waikato Coast was dominated by this topic. Um, and it actually demonstrated the extent to how well this worked. Um, I just, actually just want to say let's put more of them in in the city because the other thing that didn't work at McCandry Bay was there was too much interaction between, it was too close to houses. And whereas what you've got at Thomas Burns is the perfect site, there's very little interaction with, um, night, other, you know, people's houses and other such things. And I think it depends entirely on your ratepayers, whether happy or unhappy to see them walking. whether happy or unhappy to see them walking across the bridge and heading into town at six o'clock as the first ones roll in. I honestly believe that the best way forward with this is the way we're going now, which is a welcoming approach. And out of it comes all of these intangible benefits, such as the reputation of the city and other such things. So, you know, I know how I'm writing. Thanks.
Councillor Hall, were you telling me to turn my microphone off? So you don't want to speak? Okey-dokey. Councillor Wiley?
Thank you. Most of what I was going to say, I've already said. The reason I would like this taken separately is because I do support the expansion of the community ranger numbers, especially if there is funding approval from MB to do it. And obviously, I can't support the Thomas Burns trial if it is going to be a, a free trial yet again.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. I can support this. I find it odd when we have such enthusiasm around the table almost unanimously for supporting the city as being a visitor destination, and talk about how we can get as many international visitors as possible to come and visit the city, and then turn around and pick and choose who we think is good enough, largely based on how much money they have to enjoy a hospitality. And that is not the way that the city should operate. And I think it's a little bit embarrassing to come from the governing body of a city to be so inhospitable to visitors and to measure someone's worthiness by whether or not they're likely to go to Larnex Castle or not, while they are enjoying their stay here as worthy as that institution is. And I do feel for accommodation providers. It's a difficult industry. But I don't think it's as simple as going around camping, counting the camper vans in Thomas Burns Car Park, and then timesing that by thirty or forty dollars a night and saying that is the foregone income. I mean, once upon a time, I would have been happy to sleep in the back of a van, and the less said about that, the better. But it's not as simple as if you offer a free alternative, everyone will take the free option. I'm a little bit more precious about my accommodation choices these days, and a lot of people are, I think. So it's not as if, you know, even if we could put up the barricades at the city limits and stop these people from coming, which we can't. If, if everyone was forced to take up the option of a top-ten Holiday Park or a motel accommodation, they wouldn't come. And that's fine, but I think you need to acknowledge the fact, if you're arguing that that's where we should be pointing people, that there will be fewer people coming. And in some cases, that might be a legitimate method. But I think using disposable income as a proxy for hospitality is an embarrassing way of running a visitor attraction strategy. And I welcome this far more pragmatic approach that we've taken in the last couple of years. I mean, yes, this got off to a fairly rough start in the early stages, and some of us were closer up to the front lines than others. But I think we've got to a reasonably good place. I think we've got to think very carefully if we are to expand the urban offering as to where those places might be. This is a fairly, a fairly unique option tucked in behind the railway station, proximate to the central city, but also, you know, not proximate to residential or, or, or businesses in the way that they might be disturbed overnight. So thanks to staff for their work. And this, this is, is one of the great vexed issues of the time that I've spent on this body. And so thank you for doing the work on the front lines of this. I know it's not easy.
Councillor Newell?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much for the report. Yeah, I think this is, when, when I think everything that's been said around the table almost has been exactly where the city needs to go with it, I, I think it's worked really well. I think the option of the Oval as, as another larger facility is, is one that could really work, taking into account that it is far enough away from humanity. And it would also be of benefit to, you know, if we could put some, some toilets in there, obviously, that's going to be a benefit to those that are using the Oval every Saturday morning as well. And there's quite a few of those. So, yeah, I think the work that we've done has, has really worked. And I, I welcome this to continue, so thank you.
Further speakers? There appearing to be none. I'll put the first part...
Division, please.
Sorry?
Division, please.
The division. This is voting on the community ranger increase, the first part, part A of the motion. All yours, Fr President.
Councillor Elder?
Aye.
Councillor Gary?
Aye.
Councillor Hall? Councillor Hawkins? Councillor LaFesso?
Aye.
Councillor O'Malley?
Aye.
Councillor Newell?
Aye.
Councillor Staines?
Aye.
Councillor Stedman? Councillor Wiley?
Yes.
Councillor Wilson?
Aye.
The Chair?
Aye. I think I can conclude that unanimously. Thank you. And now B, that we approve the continuation of the Thomas Burns trial site for the six-month freedom camping season nineteen-twenty.
So that's the same mover?
Oh, yeah, I moved it, same mover and second. We should have little buttons in front of us.
We're a little wary to cross them, mate. Come, you should say.
Red and green? Go on.
Yeah, red and green.
Go along, then. Sorry.
Technology's out there.
Yes, you can.
Councillor Elder?
Aye.
Councillor Gary?
Aye.
Councillor Hall?
Aye.
Councillor Hawkins?
Aye.
Councillor LaFesso?
Aye.
Councillor O'Malley?
Aye.
Councillor Newell?
Aye.
Councillor Staines?
Aye.
Councillor Stedman?
Aye.
Councillor Wiley?
Aye.
Councillor Wilson?
Aye.
The Chair?
Aye.
Carried, eleven-one.
Eleven-one, that's carried. Now, just before we close, I want, I need to report to you in respect of matters that are considered by the Chair raised at the eleven June meeting. There were three items. The first one was the review of, of, on the commercial use of footpaths. That's being addressed as part of the Central City Plan. Consideration for bike rack design and numbers also being dealt with as part of the Central City Plan. And an update on the timeline for surface repairs in the exchange due to slumping will be reported on in due course by the Parks and Recreation Department. And just before closing the meeting, the last of this triennium, of course, can I thank you for your cooperation, tolerance, forbearance, and deep sensitivity to say nothing of your wit and incisive intelligence collectively, and wish you all the best for the delightful bunfight that faces us. Thank you very much. The meeting is closed.